All right, will the clerk please call the rope?
Winters.
Here.
Eckhart.
Here.
Hamilton. Stelling.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
Hannaford.
Here.
Wallace.
Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separate. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting in February 19, 2019, and B, approval of the, uh, approval of claims in the amount of $164,920.54 and payroll expenses of $247,761.18. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, second by Mr. Sherman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. Item A, the Alva Tourism Tax Commission meeting on February 20, 2019. Mr. Martin?
Uh, we had three items come across. Uh, first one, uh, was the car show. Unanimously voted to fully fund that. Uh, the second was the Cruisin' Cool Boulevard, uh, group. Um, we voted to fund that one. And then the subcommittee to the Alva Tourism Tax, the Marketing and Promotion Group, uh, we funded their request, um, to hire, uh, Schnebel to, uh, take care of the, uh, marketing for the visit out of Bay. Routine meeting other than that. Glad to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Martin? All right, thank you. Next item is the Recreation Complex Four meeting on February 20, 2019. We've got some, something on the agenda coming from this, but Mr. Sherman, do you have a report?
Uh, it was pretty much a routine meeting other than discussion on the quarterly, changing to a quarterly meeting from a monthly meeting. Uh, and that's later in the agenda, so.
Joe Don, anything to add? Does council have any questions? Next item is the Alva Public Library Board meeting on March 4, 2019. Mr. Eckhart?
Okay, um, we had several items that we discussed. Circulation was down in February, but that was partially, we believe, because of the weather and the, uh, shorter month. Um, uh, we did, we are going to be hosting a six-week financial fitness workshop at the, uh, library starting March 25th. So if that's something that anybody would be interested in, that's, it's free of charge, so it doesn't cost me anything. It's kind of a, helps you with, in different financial aspects of your life. Um, the Chocolate Fantasy, which is always a big, uh, event, is going to be coming up April 4th. Uh, that's one of the, it's a huge fundraiser, huge thing for the library. Um, they got a new projector for the auditorium, uh, which they're looking at replacing just, over time, they're replacing technology as we go through. Um, the summer reading program is coming up, um, against, you have a perfect Monday in June when they typically have it. Um, this year it's Universe of Stories, so it's kind of a space-themed, uh, summer program there. And they're bringing back a lot of the things that were a lot of fun, like mad scientists and the, uh, animals, wild animals, and some of that stuff that they brought back in the past that kids really liked. Um, and that was pretty much, oh, sorry. Um, and they did start their code club, which is like computer coding and stuff like that. Um, and they had their first group of eight that showed up. And then they're going to open up this summer to a larger group of age, age range. So it's kind of a neat program that they're looking at trying there, so.
Would make, would make one comment in that this morning's meeting, Sandra told me that they still do have, uh, spaces open for the financial fitness workshop, so if you know of anybody that wants to, uh, be a part of that, just get in touch, just get with people at the library and then get you signed up.
Does council have any questions? Thank you. Uh, next item is the Alva Regional Airport Commission meeting on March 11, 2019. We conducted our regular business of approving minutes and, uh, council report, manager's report. Uh, we did have a presentation on the upcoming Alva fly-in. After last year's fly-in was a pretty good success, even with very poor weather, um, the plans have been underway to, to have a fall fly-in, so they set the dates for September 27th through 29th, uh, this year. Uh, and that will, there won't be, uh, a race associated with, with this year's event, but they are working on having some, um, for lack of better terminology, pilot games, what I call them, some, some different things where the, uh, pilots compete for different, you know, prizes and whatnot, so, um, they're looking to, uh, really have a good, uh, three-day event planned there. Um, we did take action to retain a new engineer. Uh, we went with CEC, they're based out of Oklahoma City, um, and they will be replacing, um, Garver as our engineer on record, um, after, uh, or beginning with, uh, the construction of our, um, next April project out there. So Garver is still the engineer on record for the design, um, but when we get into construction, uh, CEC will take over with that, and then they'll have our, um, engineering for the next five years, um, for consideration again at that time. We, uh, feel pretty good about them. They've, they've got, uh, quite a bit of, uh, history in, in the state of Oklahoma, and, uh, they're one of the few that actually, uh, does business north of I-40 and west of I-35, so, um, projects in Enid and even Hooker, um, Winoka and some of the other airports that we might be familiar with. Um, and, you know, for the folks that we knew in the communities where they operated, they, they received good recommendations as well. Um, we approved some fuel system upgrades that were requirements by the Corporation Commission. Um, we approved, uh, purchasing limit for the, uh, airport manager, um, had a discussion on part-time help, and, that's about it. Happy to answer any questions, or Joe Don, if there's anything you'd like to add?
I think I covered everything.
Any questions? Next item is the Alva Municipal Cemetery meeting on March 13, 2019. Mr. Reed?
Our meetings are still eight o'clock in the morning, so that's interesting time. Uh, once we approved our minutes from December, um, the first major areas of discussion was under the section's report about some of the gravestones are beginning to settle and moving to interesting angles, and the section is going to be trying to figure out how to get those readjusted and set correctly. He has also repaired a water leak under one of the roads. The back gate was repaired, um, but during the snowstorm, four-wheelers went through the gate, breaking the welds and doing their traveling or joyriding in the northwest section of the cemetery area. And Chris said they have now reinforced the back gate and put up more markers and reflectors and all of that, so they're still trying to stop that adventure. Uh, the inmate crew, we have some of the inmates are now, uh, working under Chris's supervision. Rose Blunt and Don Lynch, uh, did a presentation on the upcoming tombstone tour. We'll be honoring eight historical Alva males. They couldn't find, I guess, enough biological information about some of the females who have led an Alva that are passed on. It will be on, the tour will be on April 27th. It'll start at 3:00 PM. You will meet in the parking lot by the swimming pool. A hot dog feed will start at 2:00 PM, and a hay wagon will take off every 20 minutes to do the tour. And I've been told it's going to last to 11, but I haven't heard that, except just to the great point. Um, discussion, action, replace the current backhoe. We have sent out a request to Western Equipment. We have not heard back from them. Uh, an issue, oh, there are two issues that people are very concerned about. The gopher problem seems to be growing. They're trying to figure out a way how to stop the gophers. That may be part of the, causing the problem of the settling of the tombstones. And the other was a statement made by Representative Newton about a request to sell abandoned plots after 75 years. And if you all hear as much as I'm hearing, that's not a very popular idea. I've been chewed on quite a bit by several people over that idea, so beware.
Does council have any questions? Thank you, ladies. Next item is the Strategic Land Use Task Force meeting on March 14, 2019. Mr. Stelling?
Uh, actually, we've had, we've had, uh, two meetings in that time. First one, uh, we got everybody together and, uh, handed us some material, kind of explained to them what our focus was, what we're intending to do, lasted a little bit over an hour. And then, uh, we met again here last Thursday, I believe, and Mr. Martin Seibel, I believe, he came and, and gave a presentation, and we were last, came a lot of questions and stuff, how to do stuff, and how to basically look at different zoning and kind of tweak the, what is allowable in those zones, and how to address all the properties basically that are out of, uh, compliance just because of the land, square footage and everything, so, uh, we have another meeting set up with him, I believe, on the May 9th, but we're going to meet here in April again and try to discuss some more things to kind of get the ideas going to where once he does come, then we have more focus on what to ask him, utilize his time of best. So we're kind of breaking into it, progressing.
Anything to add?
There'll be significant amount of challenges due to the time that it's been since it was last addressed.
Yep. Um, it's, uh, you know, I can only imagine if our plan wasn't in the shape that's in. It's old, but, you know, it's really not in that shape, so, um, I think we're going to come out of that as something we can all live with and, and be in better shape word afterwards. Anything, anything? Council have any questions? Thank you. Uh, next item is Finance Committee report. Dr. Hannaford?
Tonight, we, uh, met, reviewed, signed our claims, some of our large claims. General fund, as you can see, our flooring materials is about $12,000. Um, airport fund, bulk fuel, a little over $20,000. Uh, of course, we're continuing to pay on our OWRB construction fund for a water tower at $145,000. And, uh, AUA fund, we had our, our chipper that's in use now, $50,000. Um, just briefly, sales tax, uh, sales and use tax, um, for March, we were up compared to last year in 2018 for the same month, uh, but we were, we were down from the previous month. Um, and I'll let Joe Don do a little bit more of the financial report. Uh, grants, the safe routes, the school grant that we've been waiting on, we did not receive that one. Uh, we've asked Joe Don to see if he could get us anything with our scoring, to kind of see where we need to make improvements, although we felt really good about the, about the grant application. Some of the capital improvements, of course, we're wrapping up this project here with the HB, uh, HBAC. Should be back into the offices, uh, probably the first part of April. Um, our water distribution line, budgeted, uh, nearly half a million dollars. We spent about $200,000, so there should be some good savings. Uh, we should, want to start laying the line, but we're trying to deal with some groundwater problems, so that's going to take a little bit more time to figure out. Uh, our chipper we just talked about is in use, and it will remind the community to, if you want wood chips or, or logs, that they're available at the transfer station. And then we talked, um, had a lengthy discussion about the ONG franchise tag and, uh, some concerns about a few things that we'd like to meet with some representatives from, uh, ONG to at least talk about. And then, uh, briefly, and it's on the agenda, we talked about a rescue truck for the fire department. And then lastly, we did receive $5,000 from O G and E for one of the use in Bud Rose Park. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The only thing I would make a comment on is the log, the firewood and the chips out of the transfer station are on a first come, first served basis.
Yeah. So. So if they're out, it's, you didn't get there in time, so.
Yeah.
Council have any questions? All right. City Mayor's report. A couple of things I wanted to bring to your attention, and one is that, uh, on April 10th, I believe, 11th, 12th, somewhere, one of those three days, or two or three of those three days, the Lieutenant Governor's Turkey Hunt is going to be in town. Um, and, uh, this has been a big event for economic development, you know, every year for the past, I don't know, maybe 20, 30 years. It's been going on a long time. Uh, and, uh, I believe you'll be receiving invitations to, to, uh, to the dinner on the 11th or 12th.
Yeah.
On the 11th, probably. And, uh, but there will be a lot of folks in town, uh, with, uh, potential business, business interests in either Alva or the surrounding areas, so, um, they'll be wanting to, you know, visit with, with folks to, to try and get an idea of what, uh, our community may have to offer, and so if you're able to attend, um, it's a, it's a really good event, so, um, that'll be, uh, north of town at Baker's Barn. The other thing I was going to bring to your attention is that there's a, a small group that hopefully will turn into a larger group of people, um, that I've been, um, working with to, uh, develop a community garden here in town. Um, there's property on the northwest, uh, side of the homestead, uh, that gets a lot of sunlight and, uh, is in a, is in a good spot to be able to do this, and, um, so, we've been working to, you know, get a plan developed and, and a budget developed to go out for, uh, grants this year, see what kind of funding we can get back, and, and start getting a pool of volunteers or people that would be interested in using the garden. Um, the idea is that there would be fresh fruits and vegetables available for, um, they would be able to be used at the homestead, um, but they would also be able to be taken to the food bank. Um, and then, uh, on top of that, uh, the people that are gardening out there would also have, um, the fresh fruits and vegetables that they would, you know, be growing. Um, the, uh, it's going to be a pretty big project, um, and, uh, if you're interested in becoming involved, you can either talk to me or Ben Orkut or Megan Caldwell. Um, and, uh, I, I think it's something that, uh, would be good for our community. I've, I've taken the kids in the summertime to go help with community gardens in, in bigger cities, um, for the past three or four years, um, and, uh, they, they really, they serve an important function in the communities that they're in, and, uh, hopefully we can get something like that, um, built up and, and actually working, uh, by the time next summer rolls around, so. That concludes my report. Does anybody have any questions? All right. City Business Managers report.
Well, gotta start off with saying that, uh, the OML Legislative Committee is monitoring several bills out there right now. Uh, one of, um, one of them is the bill, uh, Mr. Reed spoke about earlier, the cemetery lot bill, uh, but we're also monitoring things, uh, everything from public safety districts to municipal fixes, to medical marijuana. Um, all these are working through the legislative process, and, uh, as we have information to provide about those, we will. Um, some of the projects that we're, uh, talking about, we talked briefly about this li, this building. Um, we talked briefly about the water transmission line. One of the things we did not hit on was the swimming pool. Uh, we are still waiting on our plan approval from the Oklahoma Department of Health. Um, we think we have a rehab, uh, plan that's workable in their hands, uh, but we have not heard anything back from that. Uh, we'll not start hiring employee, uh, staff to, uh, man the pool until we get a positive, uh, answer from the Oklahoma Department of Health. Um, we will need about 19 employees should the, uh, plan be approved, and we've also, once we've got that plan approved, we've probably got about $9,000 worth of work that we'll need to get done this year before we can open. Um, we met last, uh, on the 7th with, uh, Beetle Co. Inc., uh, to discuss the chlorination station and that construction. Uh, they will begin construction on April 1st. They have a 70-day completion time, which puts them, um, done around, uh, June 14th. Um, so far, some of the things that are going through the departments, um, the, uh, Customer Service Department handled about $260,000 worth of payments last year, processed about 200, uh, 2,527 bills. Uh, Water Department's worked real hard on, uh, maintaining our system. They've done about 50, they've done about 59 turnoffs, 18 locates, and, um, some other replacement, uh, meter replacements and repaired, uh, project, repaired light leaks on, uh, from fire hydrants and a six-inch line that was broken. Uh, sanitation's been basically kind of routine. They are, they are, do have some staffing issues going on right now. We do have at least two, two positions open in our department. Um, there was a report to DEQ for possibly a some illegal bearing of grass in the river by the transfer station. Uh, DEQ came, came unannounced to investigate the allegation and didn't find any fault in the city of Alva's actions. Um, we processed 11 inspections and issued 11 permits during the month of February, collected about $379. We have, uh, three, five, three tall weeds and grass or inoperable vehicles, uh, filed last month. Uh, we completed two of those, uh, complaints and one's still pending. Uh, we hired a part-time police officer, and we've got a part-time airport attendant in process to be hired. We are looking for a full-time water department employee, uh, a full-time firefighter one, uh, for the rover position, four EMS posi, positions, um, and we are advertising, we will be advertising for an inmate supervisor and a couple of general labor for sanitation. Um, some of the street departments that we're working on, have been working on would be, uh, Fair, Mill, Santa Fe, Choctaw. Uh, all these streets were cleaned as regular maintenance. Uh, Hunt, East Maple, East Locust Church, Ceiling Park, Middle and Center were all cleaned as, uh, prepar, in preparation for chip seal or asphalt overlay when the weather allows. Alva Recreation Center ended their, uh, competitive baseball and, uh, ended their regular, uh, the reckless soccer. Sign-ups, um, Police Department processed about 32 different offenses in the, uh, last month. Fire Department, um, made 30, um, excuse me, made 57, uh, responded to 57 calls, anything from, uh, wrecks with injuries to air, uh, EMS assists, to air, airport landing, uh, zone seating safety. EMS processed, responded to, uh, 86 different, uh, runs, uh, and treated 52 patients last As far as the finances are concerned, um, this, the general fund has, uh, the general fund had, uh, $51,195 expenses over revenues, uh, during the month of February, uh, for the year, for the month of February, and they were $334,000 expenses over revenues, uh, for the year. This, uh, we, the general fund requires a lot of transfers to be made from other funds, and those haven't been made yet. We've got about $2 million worth of transfers budgeted. The, uh, Alva Utility Authority had a positive cash flow, uh, for the month of $229,000 and a positive cash, cash flow for the year of $587,000. Um, we are still working on getting information to the auditors, uh, for the 17, 18 audit that should be wrapping up here, uh, within the month, uh, within the month of April. Uh, our sales tax, we discussed a little bit earlier. That would be the comments. We do have the, one, one other comment I would like to make is that the city of Alva, uh, Bankett announced its, uh, community visions for 2019. I think we have been very fortunate. January through March is the, Bankett's is sponsoring the public, uh, the summer youth programs at the library. And then, for the first time that I'm aware of, for two consecutive quarters, April through September, they will be sponsoring the Bud Rose Park renovation project. Uh, and, uh, equipment that we're buying down there, I mean, part of the budget, part of the funds that we have, um, a plan for that park is in this budget year. We did receive a grant from the, uh, National Trust of almost $35,000 that we'll be buying some playground equipment or some, uh, uh, yeah, it'd be playground type, activity type equipment that'll be going into that, um, that park. Uh, probably, you should be seeing that expenditure approval next month. So I do want to plug the Bankett program. They've been very generous to us, and, um, we are very fortunate to have that program in, in place. Uh, year-to-date across all funds, we have collected $8,690,000 and have expended $1,123,000. That would be my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council have any questions? Thank you, Joe Don. Um, I will add two more things on his report, um, just to remind everybody that March 30th is going to be our budget retreat out at the VOTAC, so, uh, look forward to having as many of you there as possible. Um, and you said we're expecting to have operations back in City Hall come April 6th.
April 7th. We'll be moving, hey, 1/6 is on a Saturday. We'll be, we're planning on moving on that Saturday. Have everything operational Monday after.
Well, council chambers looks good. Pleased with that.
Well, I will say that, uh, the ladies did the painting themselves, so if you see any runs or streaks, it's not my fault.
It's all your fault.
And then, they were instrumental in picking out the, well, they did pick out the flooring for the, for our council chamber floors. I think the upgrades that we've had are very, are, were needed and worthwhile, and any congratulations that you have goes to those ladies.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 7. This is a 7 and 8 deal with dilapidated properties. 7 is a public hearing to determine whether the following addresses should be declared dilapidated and constituting a detriment or hazard, and therefore nuisances defined by city ordinance invaded. Item A is 118 10th Street, and item B is 202 9th Street. You've seen in your packet the notifications that went out to property owners, as well as the pictures from the property, and hopefully, you guys might have had an opportunity to drive by as well. Is there anyone?
Mr. Mayor, before we start, I was provided with this documentation this evening. Is the notices I'm seeing that was sent to Ms. Severn and Joan Holmes indicates that there was a hearing to be scheduled on March 15th? Has there been another notice given, actual notice to them?
Yes, sir. I sent out the correct dates. I sent out the wrong one, and I resent, and I got the notification back that they signed for them, so they do know.
But was that for a March 18th hearing? Do you have that correspondence that verifies that they were given notice of tonight's hearing?
Yes, sir. They're back at the office. I mean, I got all the certified mail returnings.
Right. That, that part I'm not concerned with. What I'm concerned with is, we originally, apparently, both of them had a February 25th, 19 hearing date they were notified of. In January, they were given a February 25th hearing date, and in February, they were given a March 15th hearing date.
Yes, I, the first mistake I thought was, it was going to the planning commission, and it was sort of City Council first, and so I sent out another one and read the date wrong, but I did send out the correct dates.
So, I just want to be confirmed, we have a letter that went out to them that said tonight's, and you had the verification from that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to get copies of that.
Okay. I know the, the 118 10th Street also has a 930 Santa Fe belonging to Juan Severn, and she's pretty elderly, so she said she could not make the meeting.
Do we want to give their chance to run across the street and get the letters, or?
I would like to, just so we will have that in record to verify, because otherwise, any action we take can be invalidated. So if we could do that, we will move on to other agenda items.
We'll come back to 7 and 8. Item 9 is discussion and action on ordinance 2019-001 amending section 38-126 entitled "Selection of Chair and Secretary Meetings Quorum of the City of Alba Code of Ordinances Amending the Monthly Meeting Requirement to Provide Quarterly Meetings Repealer and Declaration of Emergency." And this is for the Recreation Complex Board. Mr. Sherman, would you like to share with us?
Yeah, the, ARC Board, our Recreation Board, just really felt like half of our meetings, we show up at 5:30, we're done by 5:35, because it's a budget, look over budget. There's not really a bunch of agenda items on most of those agendas. We have, our last discussion was about setting up the meeting so that, you know, when it comes time to recede fields, or budget time, or something like that, that we align our quarterly meetings with those specific times of the year. We just really feel like a quarterly meeting is more than enough to handle the business out of the ARC.
Special meetings can be called as needed. So this did pass unanimously with the members at the last meeting?
Yes, sir.
And I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Ordinance 2019-001 amending section 38-126 entitled "Selection of Chair and Secretary Meetings Quorum of the Alba City of Alba Code of Ordinances Amending Monthly Meeting Requirements to Provide Quarterly Meetings Repealer and Declaration of Emergency."
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Winters to approve ordinance number 2019-001 amending section 38-126 as stated. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Item 10 is, okay, is there a motion to declare emergency?
Motion to declare emergency?
I have a motion to declare an emergency by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Winters. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Now, we'll move on to item 10, discussion and action to authorize the purchase of a new F-550 rescue truck off the Oklahoma State Purchasing Contract in an amount not to exceed $140,000. This item is the last thing in your packet, I believe, yeah. And it was budgeted for this year. You can see all of the specs and everything that go into that. As stated in the agenda, it is at state contract pricing that the purchase would be made. I will point out that, to the extent that local Ford dealership would be able, or either dealership would be able to provide a comparable vehicle, as long as they could do it at state contract pricing, we have the option to do that, correct?
Yes.
And the rest of the outfitting of the vehicle would need to take place somewhere else. But we do have Fire Marshal Miller and firefighter Leon here. If anybody has any questions about the specifications, Joe Don, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, the, I mean, it, well, the only thing I would add, that probably, once we place the order for the vehicle and get everything in process, we're probably looking at about at least a six-month delivery time. There may be, when we send, when we send the vehicle to Chief Fire and Safety, who I suspect is going to be the outfitter of the vehicle, they usually get the, they typically get the state contract awards to construct the body. They may require us to put down a down payment, but it wouldn't be the full $140,000.
Counsel, have any questions? Brian, do you have anything you want to add? All right. I'd entertain a motion.
Like a motion to authorize the purchase of a new Ford F-550 rescue truck off of the Oklahoma State Purchasing Contract in an amount not to exceed $140,000.
I got Dr. Hannaford with the motion, and a second by Mr. Stelling to authorize purchase of a new F-550 rescue truck off the Oklahoma State Purchasing Contract in an amount not to exceed $140,000. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Item 11, remarks and inquiries by citizens. We'll allow public comments, limited to two minutes per speaker, and we ask that the speaker please identify himself or herself.
I am Jewel Wadu, and I'm not agreeing to everything. I just have a primer sewn. If I'm shaking my head, I always am. Doesn't mean I'm agreeing. But I have some requests. A stop sign at 12th and Maple, where the retaining wall sticks out into the street. It's a very pretty retaining wall, but it's not safe. But it's already up, so nothing can be done about it. But there needs to be a stop sign there for the fat track that's coming from the west happens to be dangerous there. And there's a hole there across the street in front of, it's right through the corner by the Mallory House, 12th and Maple. At 12th and Locust, that intersection is very gruff. It's broken, the cement is broken out. I think it needs to be addressed. And at 5th and Church, the same thing. And at High and Fifth, also. Also, who decides who, where the streets get worked on first? The resurfacing.
Street Department, you typically get, the Street Department usually makes the final decision on that.
We, we put together a plan with the Street Committee in the, in the, early in the business year, and then we try to work that plan throughout the year. But that's not to say if something comes up, we couldn't work on it.
Maple from Museum Club down to the 100 block is horrible, horrible. And it needs to be resurfaced. Center Street from 10th Street to about 12th Street is very bad, too. Doesn't anyone else complain about these?
Let me, let me get back to my report, Jewel, and one of the things that we're working on right now, as far as the Street Department is concerned, and getting, and getting prepared for overlays, we're working on, now, this is the ones we're prepping right now, to get ready for overlays and/or a chip seal this summer. That's going to be Hunt Street, Ceiling Street, Park Street, Minno Street. We've done those streets in the past, but it's time to go back and do something else, or we'll be in the same spot we were when we did them. Now, the things that we're going to be touching, working on that we haven't worked on yet before are East Maple, East Locust, East Church, and East Center. I think that addresses all those streets that you just named off, that we're, I mean, those are the streets we are planning on working on this summer.
Oh, I think those are on the other side, too.
No, Locust and 12th, we'd be on the east, we'd be part of that East Locust.
No, that's south.
West, okay, I'm sorry.
It's west.
Okay.
These streets are all west. Maple Street, for instance, from, I would say 13th down to the 100 block is really terrible. I don't even live there on those streets, but they're terrible. I know people that do. But anyway, I think I've used up my two minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I wrote them down this time, Jewel. All right. Are there any other public comments? Okay, we'll move on to item 7, public hearing to determine whether the following addresses should be invaded. Derek, were you able to get those letters?
Well, I do not have the hard copies that I printed off. I do have ones that were on my computer that auto updates the send date. I mean, is that gonna, so it doesn't show the accurate date of when I sent them, because it automatically updates.
Probably get the table, do it to the table. I, I think what, I mean, the, the letter indicates that we had a March, we were going to have a March 15 hearing date for two of those properties. And obviously, this is not March 15th, so the owners may have misunderstood when they needed to be here or not be here. So we have to have evidence that we've given them proper notice.
Right.
My suggestion would be table, give them, give them new notice for the next council meeting, and take care of it then.
I have a motion to table item 7 and 8. Until next regular meeting?
And can they table both items?
We'll table 7, and then we'll do 8.
Okay. All right. I have a motion by Dr. Hannaford to table a public hearing regarding nuisances at 118 10th and 202 9th, with a second by Mr. Sherman. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to table number 8?
I'll motion to table agenda item number 8.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Winters, second by Mr. Sherman to table action on the declaration of dilapidation for 118 10th and 202 9th. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Well, Derek, we appreciate your work on this, and we haven't anything yet. You'll get it, all right. And we'll hear it at the next meeting.
In the package, it says something about 930 Santa Fe. What is that? That is, lumped in with 118 10th. It's owned by the same lady. It was on that, it just didn't make it on any of the, but.
Maybe next time, then, with corrections, maybe all three together.
All right. Okay, now moving to last item, remarks and inquiries by council members. All right. Having done, we will adjourn the city council meeting and open the Alba Utility Thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
Please call a roll.
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton?
Stelling?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
All right. Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, and will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting in February 19, 2019. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $356,649.87 and payroll expenses of $64,218.47. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Winters and a second by Mr. Sherman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right. We'll adjourn the Alba Utility Authority meeting and open the Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call a roll.
Winters?
Here.
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hamiltons? Stelling?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, and will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting in February nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, seventy-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents, and payroll expenses of fourteen thousand, five-hundred-seventy-two dollars and seventy cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mr. Winters to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item five is discussion and action to purchase a new cooler freezer from Arctic Restaurant Equipment and Supply in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. This is a budgeted item for at the Homestead, and in the packet, you'll see the quotes from Arctic, as well as a couple other quotes that were just a little bit more expensive, but this will increase the amount of refrigerated storage, refrigerator and freezer storage as well, and when this is done, it will increase the amount of dry storage at the Homestead. Stored presently at a premium, and many times we're having to store some of our food supplies over at the Shercoalesse home. So it looks like this total project, which we've invested at fifty thousand, is going to come in closer to forty, forty-two, somewhere in there, with the sale of, we'll probably eventually declare surplus, our old coolers and freezers. I'm happy to answer any questions. This is the lowest bid. This is not a bid, but it is, it is lowest.
Okay.
It didn't meet the fifty-thousand-dollar threshold for bid requirement. The quote from Asher was about two-hundred dollars more, and then the quote from the other company was forty dollars more than that.
I'll make a motion to purchase a new cooler freezer from Arctic Restaurant Equipment and Supply in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second.
Have a motion by Dr. Hannaford and a second by Mr. Sherman to purchase a new cooler freezer from Arctic Restaurant Equipment and Supply in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. Is there any further discussion? Please call a vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
All right. That is all the business we have. We are adjourned. Thank you all.